Slamming a knock. This is the August 11th, 2021, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome, everybody, and welcome to Councilwoman Gina Terusio, who is sitting in for Maureen this evening. We've got a pretty full agenda, so we're going to just get right to it. First item is approval of the July 28, 2021 minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections, deletions? Okay.
I approve.
Victoria moved to approve.
I'll stick.
Mike's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, approved. Next on the agenda is a public comment period, limited to 15 minutes, on any issue that somebody would like to speak to us about, but not on tonight's agenda or pending before us. So is there anybody that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Do I do my comments?
Is it, if you'll come up to the podium and state your name and your address, please? And this is for items not on tonight's agenda?
Oh, no, no, this is about the development.
Okay, that will come later.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. That moves us to our first public hearing. This is a proposal for a rezone of a 7.56 acre area within South Gate Third Edition, located east of the current premise, terminus of Granville Street and Castleford, within the city of Moscow. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Before you tonight, we have a public hearing, and this is at the request of Mike Salisbury for a 7.56 acre area, and this is within South Gate Third Edition. It's directly to the east of the existing South Gate Phase Two. So located east of the current terminus is Granville Street and Castleford Street. Proposed rezone before you tonight is rezone from a combination of what's currently low-density single-family residential R1, moderate-density residential R2, and medium-density residential R3 zones to the medium-density R3 zone. So this is the subject property highlighted in red at the center of your screen. Photos from around 2018, so some development has occurred in the area. A lot of homes have been constructed on Chelsea Court, the first two homes here on Granville Street, right up against Phase Three. This is Milton Arthur Park here to the north. Sutton Street is halfway developed. That'll be completed with, coinciding with Phase Three of this development. Robinson Park Road is here, running east-west to the north. We also have Parker Farm, located to the east here. There's area-city impact properties, primarily rural. Lundquist Lane, Flomer, to the south here, as well as just regular, single-family homes within South Gate Third Edition to the west. Taking a closer look at that property, you can see the current plat, so this property is within Phase Three, and you can see Granville's was intended to be extended and tie in with Castleford looping around, and then there's a cul-de-sac street-platted kismet court there in the northeast. Taking a look at the current comp plan designation for this property, it's designated as auto-urban residential, as well as all the surrounding properties, with the exception of Milton Arthur Park, which is Parks and Open Space designation. There is a pocket of neighborhood business zoning, which is a designation of suburban commercial up here, currently a daycare utilizing that property. So taking a look at what auto-urban residential sites within the comp plan, it's primarily single-family detached homes on lots ranging from 7,000 to 11,000 square feet in size, a little more isolated from surrounding uses, may require residents to rely more on automobile transportation. It's typically anticipated to be developed to low to moderate density, densities between three to six units per acre, and it also could include a mixture of single-family, twin home, townhouse, residential dwellings. And then it points to appropriate zoning designations, which are the R1, R2, or R3 zones. So taking a look at the current zoning configuration, you can see it's currently a mixture. We have the R3 zone, located within a portion of what would be Phase Two. Extender could be limited to no more than detached, single-family dwellings, with the exception of lots six, seven, and eight of Block Two. Those are within Chelsea Court, which is located in Phase Two of that development, pretty much at the end of Chelsea Court. And the idea there was, you know, one unit could be fronting on Chelsea Court, and the other one could be on Castleford, and provide a good transition with the duplexes there. So taking a look at the access, Granville Street and Castleford Street are local neighborhood streets. This segment that ties into Phase Three, they're 28-foot-wide paved roadway. We do have 34-foot-wide sections on portions of both those streets earlier on, closer as you reach Notting Hill. There are curb gutters and sidewalks on both sides of the street, and on-street parking would be designated on one side of the street currently within those segments. And water sanitary sewers, storm sewer, are extended to the property within Granville and Castleford. Staff recommends that the commission conduct the public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony received, recommend an approval of proposed rezone from the combination of R1, R2, and R3 zones to exclusively the R3 zone, with one condition, that the proposed R3 zone be limited to no more than detached, single-family dwellings, and that's in order to carry over the condition that was implemented in 2008, just for consistency and character in the neighborhood. And of course, direct staff to prepare a reason statement of relevant criteria and standards to be reviewed at an upcoming meeting, and I'd certainly be able to try to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody have questions for Mike? Okay. Mike, thank you very much. With that, we will open the public hearing, and we'd like to start by hearing from the applicant or representative.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. And I think Mike covered most of the bases on this. We have no issue with that condition of single-family detached homes. As you could see from the previous zoning, it was kind of spotty. R1, R2, or R3 really would have fit in here fine. The reason we went with R3 is because in the future hearing you'll hear tonight, there's one section that's a little bit steep, and we'd kind of like to go with a PUD in that area. So really, I think it makes sense, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Scott? Okay, thanks, Scott.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. So we'll start with anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the project? And if you would come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and appreciate if you would limit your remarks to three minutes.
My name is Marty Staley, S-T-A-L-E-Y. I live at 2830 Granville in Moscow. I guess my first question would be, is what is going to happen to our property taxes of those that are already living there when you develop more? I know it's revenue for the city, but it's killing us. They've doubled within a year. And if I felt like I was getting some services from the city, like the sidewalks, brand-new sidewalks that are all either flaking or rising, it's kind of dangerous. And I'd also like to know who will be repaving, not so much patching, the street after all the construction is over and all the trucks, because we have that going on right now in Chelsea Court. And I think this is a question for everybody. Where's the water going to come from? With all the development that's going on here to make it a, I don't know what kind of town, but if we're hurting for water now, what's going to happen? And I'd really like to know about that one. And I'm sure the decision's already been made. I've been through things like this before in Coeur d'Alene. So all I wanted to do is have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Would anybody else like to speak in opposition to the project?
I'd like to speak, not in opposition. I have some questions that I'd like to ask.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. My name is Carl DeWing. I live at 2824 Hampton Court in Moscow, and I've sort of been watching the development that's been going on down below, and it's pretty spectacular. My one question, though, and I realize this is a fairly small subdivision, but the proposed changes to R3, how does that increase the number of lots and homes that are going to be in that area? Can somebody answer that question for me?
Well, that'll come in an upcoming hearing after the next two items are heard, but there's actually a reduction with the proposed replat of that area.
There's a reduction of the number of homes?
Number of lots.
Number of lots.
Yeah.
And is that going to affect, say, the traffic coming in and out of that area?
I mean, the traffic should be fairly minimal. If there's a reduction in the number of lots, then presumably there should be a reduction in the number of vehicle trips in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I appreciate you giving me time today. My name is Norm Metzger, and I live on Granville Street, on the corner of Granville and Notting Hill. This particular area that you have mapped out here now, I've seen different proposals, and I like this one. I walk my dog out there, and in doing that, I can see how it should be laid out. Incidentally, I've been a builder here for quite a few years. Lived in Leedaw County for 60 years, and I worked for different contractors, and then I contracted myself. I bought some lots from Mike Salisbury. I know the family, so that's where I'm coming from. And so then, when he wanted to make this proposal, and of course, I walk my dog out there, and I can see how it should be laid out, this is one of the best plans that I have seen come out, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So any other comments in opposition, and if not, any general comments or comments in support? And Scott, would you like to address any of the questions that came before us?
Yeah, once again, Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. Yeah, I think basically what we're looking at right now is the rezone, and really, it kind of cleans it up. You know, we kind of had that island of R2 sitting there before, and this just kind of makes everything a little bit better, and we've, in the past, tried to avoid having those islands of different zoning. So really, I think what's before you right now is the rezone, and I think we can defend that if you have any questions.
Any questions for Scott before we close the public hearing? Okay, great. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, how would you like to proceed? Any comments, issues, questions? And if not, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the rezone?
I guess my thought is that the rezone with the condition makes sense.
I agree, and I think it's important to keep the condition attached to that, for sure.
You've got three patchy zones, so you need to make a one.
Okay, well, would anybody like to make a motion to approve?
I move approval. I move, yeah, recommendation for approval with the condition.
Okay. Dennis second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so, let's see, I think we're going to need an RCS on that one, too, Mike, so somebody like to move for?
Well, I move that staff prepare the, whatever it's called, reason statement.
Okay, so we've got a motion, okay. Rich second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thanks very much. All right, we'll move on to the second public hearing. This is a proposed preliminary subdivision plat of a 4.59 acre within South Gate Third Edition. So, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So this is a proposed preliminary plat, and this is of a portion of the area that was just recommended for a rezone a minute ago, also within South Gate Third Edition. And it's Mike Salisbury requesting again. It's 4.59 acres to create 12 lots, which range from a little over 7,200 square feet to 59,241 square feet in size. It's being referred to as Park Valley subdivision. It was originally plotted as Phase Three of South Gate Third Edition, applicants requesting, obviously, the rezone and replat of this property. So you can see the portion of the property outlined in red at the center of your screen, so covers a little over half of the area that was proposed to be rezoned. And once again, you can see the original subdivision plat with those black lines underneath there. Just a closer view of that property. Now, we've got topography, so one of the main challenges with this property and the reason for, really, the replats of the property are just the challenging topography within the area. And you can see each one of those lines, contour lines, represents one foot of elevation change. The darker lines represent 10 feet there, so this is 10 feet of elevation. So progressively getting steeper as you head to the southeast, and then it levels out here towards the top. So the main issue with the property is just challenging topography. So once again, auto-urban residential, we've already gone through really what that designation means in the comp plan, and then, of course, the proposed rezone. We've already gone over the R3 designation, as well as that condition from 2008. So that brings us to the preliminary plat for Park Valley. There's 12 lots, like we said, ranging from 7,200 to 59,241 square feet in size. The minimum lot size for the R3 zone is 6,000 square feet, so all the proposed lots meet that requirement, as well as the minimum lot width, which is 60 feet. It includes the extension of Granville and Castleford. There's also a proposed pedestrian sidewalk connection to Milton Arthur Park. This is further to the northeast of the property, and so this is the preliminary plat that was submitted. You can see there's a little confusion as far as, so these represent the zoning district boundaries here. So you have to look beyond that a little bit, but really, you can see with the extension of the roads, we've got Castleford and Granville, which end up connecting here in a T intersection. This will be one property here at the end, that's the larger property that was described, but essentially, Castleford ends up extending T intersection, and then ends up terminating into that property. You can see the pedestrian pathway, which connects the street with Milton Arthur Park here to the north. Then the street is going to have parking on both sides, so it'll transition from the 28-foot-wide street section to the 34-foot-wide street section, which includes parking on both sides. They are local neighborhood streets for Granville and Castleford, 28-foot-wide paved roadway. Like I mentioned, Castleford will be extended into the subdivision here. And then curb gutter sidewalks on both sides of the street, on-street parking only on one side, leading up to the subdivision. And then, of course, water sanitary and storm currently exist within the Granville and Castleford street alignments. Parkland dedication requirements have previously been satisfied with a dedication, grading, and hydroseating of Milton Arthur Park, so no further dedications required. Staff recommends the commission conduct the public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony received, recommend approval of the proposed Park Valley preliminary plat with no conditions, and direct staff to prepare the RCS, and certainly be able to answer any questions you have.
So any questions for Mike? All right. Mike, thank you very much. Oh, did you, Victoria, did you?
Do you want to mention the engineering recommendations that were with this?
You know, certainly, there's engineering memo within your packet. A lot of those will be addressed within the construction drawings, so they weren't, we didn't feel a need that they needed to be included as recommendations. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments, questions? Okay, thanks, Mike. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. First, let's hear from the applicant. Scott, you're up again.
Thank you, Commissioners. Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. I think Mike addressed our biggest concern with the previous plat layout is the grading and the way the road would lay. It was, it's really steep in there, and so we found a way to overcome that with the combination of this and the future PUD. The other thing that this layout provides us with is a little bit less impervious surface for, so we're not getting quite as much roadway, which is cost and adds cost to the lots and increases the cost to the person buying the lot. So in an effort to, you know, to keep the costs at a minimum, we, you know, this does add some loss to the city, which apparently is needed right now, and, you know, with the reduction in roadway construction, it helps offset some of those costs, too. So other than that, I would gladly answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Scott? Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thank you very much.
So, oh, did you have a question, Joel? I'm sorry.
So there is a change in lot number here.
Yes, there is a reduction. Lots are a little bit larger to accommodate the grading rather than smaller, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thanks. All right, we'll move on to anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to the project? If you would state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Hi, my, excuse me, my name is Kathy Dawes. I live at 1018 East E Street. I apologize for not having been involved more in the decisions that have been made with regard to all these new developments that have been brought up, especially in this last, in the summer and spring. I am very concerned about all items four through seven that are planning to and proposing all of these new housing developments in our town. I am mostly concerned about water resources, and we've been told that, for decades, that our, I've lived here for 48 years, that our groundwater sources are diminishing and not recharging. We lack a solid understanding of how long this will last or not, and how sustainably we can resource our water. So before ascertaining that we can assure water as a resource will be available for future generations of families on the Palouse, the city of Moscow has approved a number of developments this summer, which will increase the population of the city, increasing the amount of water that will be needed, household and irrigation purposes, and the infrastructure necessary to support this added growth will be tremendous. I'm asking, where is this water going to come from? How can we approve growth before we know the limits of our resources, especially water? I have a couple of things here that I'd like to refer to. I'd like to know how many housing units so far that this commission has approved in the last couple of months? And this particular day, you are discussing up to about 100 new ones, new housing units, from what I understand, from what I've read on the agenda. I know, I looked online, it says Moscow has an annual growth of about 0.75%, which is maybe 188 people every year. Is that, does that jive with what we're doing by adding all these houses? I also want to know if you've checked with the Leedaw County Commissioners about how the new property tax bill will affect Moscow's rate of growth and ability to provide needed services? Because when Brad Little signed that bill, Kelly Packer, Executive Director of the Association of Idaho Cities, said, "Under the new law, either growth will be curtailed, or services will be compromised." It's that simple. We can't have both without some real, real planning." And I think that is all of my comments that I have. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that would like to, ooh, sorry. Okay, anybody that would like to speak in a general nature or in support of? David?
David Hall, 1334 Wallen Road. I just have a question for Mr. Ray, if that's all right. It's not named there, but there's a stub starting with S. Was it Sutton Road? Is that planned eventually to go through to Robinson Park Road, and would that, how would that affect traffic flow in the development?
Yeah, it'd be the responsibility, it is currently the responsibility of Phase Three, which would include this property, to extend the Sutton Road all the way out to Robinson Park Road.
And it seems like that could affect the traffic. I don't know how big it would be compared to the other ones winding through developments, but it could be a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anybody else that would like to speak?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am, if you'd come to the podium, please.
Marty Staley, 2830 Granville. One of my questions is to Mike, what is the price range? What do you foresee is the price range on those homes?
That's a great question.
No, it's a tax question.
The price of the lots or the?
Both.
I have no idea.
You have no idea?
It depends what people build on. I don't build all the homes.
Oh, you answered the wrong question.
Okay, anybody else? And Scott, would you like to say any closing words?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. Just to touch on the water issues, I know, I know that's in the forefront of all the discussions. We discussed it in the past, and like we mentioned, this is actually a reduction in the number of lots and hopefully in the water usage. I know Moscow's been on the forefront of conservation and innovation, too, so I know that's a concern, and I know it's also being worked on. As far as how this directly impacts it, that is probably a better question for the city engineer than me, so. But thank you.
Okay, thanks, Scott. All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, any comments?
I don't really, I just want, I just want you guys to know that I understand your concerns, and this, and our minds, my mind is not made up when I come up here before I listen to you guys. I know it seems like it is, and it seems like we pass a lot of stuff, and we do, but like you said, it's like 188 people, that's at 0.75%, and that's people from California not wanting to come. That's not counting those guys now that we have. So this housing, it might jive. I think it'll be perfect, and if it's not, then our housing market will come down a little bit, which I think will be okay, too. So I think it's all in line with what we have set out in our comprehensive plan. I think everything matches up so far. That's why I say yes to all these things. It's not, my mind's not made up when I come in here, and I know it seems like that, but it's really not.
But enough of water.
I think that, let me, let me address that. I think that we all share the water concern. Unfortunately, at a public hearing like this is not where we resolve that. It's going to be resolved through discussions with city council, I think collectively working with P-BAC and other communities. Your concerns are valid. I'm not trying to dismiss them at all. This just probably isn't the venue where we're going to solve the water problem. I would like to, but it's, we need to keep talking about it, so I appreciate that, and in fact, as a commission, we've been talking about ways to learn more about what we need to be involved in with respect to water. I'm not a tax expert, but one of the ways that taxes get lowered is by expanding the tax base, and these developments would typically do that. Moscow's in a difficult position because it has so many non-taxpaying entities, University of Idaho, Gritman, a number of churches, so the more property tax-paying locations is going to So the more property tax-paying locations is going to assist, I think, every, all of us in paying at least not higher property taxes. So my sense is that the developments are going to reduce the property tax burden overall for individuals because we're going to spread, we're going to have a larger tax base.
My taxes are going to go down.
I, I wished I could tell you that. I, yeah, I don't think that.
It might not go up as fast.
I think Dennis. Okay, so.
I get it. I live here, too.
Yeah, I think all of us share that concern. So, Joel?
I would, I would also say that while we have approved a number of, a fairly large number of new lots, new subdivisions, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be built on in the short term. The number of vacant lots has varied considerably through time. Currently, in recent years, we've had very few. Currently, there are very few, or at least before the recent approvals. So the actual building tends to be market-driven. And I guess I'm also a little bit concerned if, if the City of Moscow were to be more I tend to suspect that the pressure on the county outside of the city would tend to increase. And I'd much rather have the new subdivision take place within the city rather than more hilltop houses sitting out in prime agricultural land. So I have mixed feelings regarding water. We are concerned, we should be concerned. It's a serious problem, but it's not necessarily a problem that the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to take care of in individual cases that come before us. We have a legal obligation to treat all property equivalently. We can't pick on one and say, you can't do it. We have to treat property equivalently. So if, to the extent that we become more restrictive because of the water issue, that is very much in the hands of city council, state legislature even, not us. Doesn't mean we can pass the buck. We need to, we need to discuss it. We need to figure out what are some of the things we can do with respect to water. You know, we, we've been encouraging small lot development, less lawns, less landscaping. There are other things we can do, but we can't simply say no.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, that's really, I think, an important view of, of our role as a commission and what's, what's happening. So I appreciate the comments, Joel. So anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we recommend approval of the Palouse preliminary plat?
Second. Okay, so we have Dennis's motion, Scott's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And I believe we need an RCS on this one as well, so a motion to, to.
Also.
Okay, all right, thanks, Mike. And Rich second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move on now to the third public hearing, also related to the South Gate III. This has to do with the subdivision plat and planned unit development of a 2.97 acre within South Gate III. So, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the other portion of the rezoned property. It's 2.97 acres. There is a PUD and a preliminary plat being proposed on that portion. Of course, Mike Salisbury requesting 2.97 acre area to create eight lots, which range from 9,189 square feet to 19,589 square feet in size. And he's referring to this as the Sierra Vista subdivision. Originally platted as Phase Three, like we'd previously discussed. And so you can see the, the remnant property outlined in red at the center of your screen, so just the southeast corner of the rezoned property. Topography map once again. Already really gone over the comp plan, so Autourban Residential as well. And that was the proposed rezone to R3. So we get to the Sierra Vista preliminary plat. We've got eight lots, 9,889 to 19,589 square feet. So like, once again, minimum lot size for R3 is 6,000, minimum lot width is 60. So all those proposed lots exceed the minimums for the R3 zone. Will be tied into the extension of Castleford Street via private street with a Hammerhead turnaround at the end. Eight single-family dwellings within the Sierra Vista PUD. There are six building plans that have been submitted. Some of those are going to be duplicated to come up with the eight lots. Those range between 860 square feet to 4,319 square feet for the floor area. Setbacks are typically 15 feet in the front. Sides are a minimum of five, but they, but they must equal 15. And the rear is 20. And this is R3 zone setbacks. The only deviation through the PUD that the applicant's requesting is proposing a 10-foot front setback, and that's to accommodate for the challenging topography in that portion of the lot. So bring those up a little bit closer to the street. The PUD base density, so R3 zone is nine and a half dwelling units per acre, 2.7 dwelling units per acre proposed with Sierra Vista PUD. So no density bonuses are required as part of this development. So that brings us to the, the preliminary plat for Sierra Vista. You can see the proposed Park Valley. This is Castleford Street extension here. This would be the private street, which would extend out from Castleford. Ends up, these are the number of lots that surround the private street and ends up terminating within the Hammerhead turnaround there, which provides adequate turnaround for firetruck So this is a, a plan for the PUD. So you can see the, just the typical house footprints for the proposed different floor Really challenging lot here, long, linear, skinnier lot. So that'll be the, the smallest of the floor plans that you'll see. But these are examples of the floor plans that have been submitted as part of the PUD. This would be the 1345 on your site plan. And then this is the floor plan. Gives you a total square footage of the floor area, so 3,163 square feet. Height is 23 feet tall to the peak of the roof. This is the 2477. So the main floor area total is 4,319 square feet for the total floor area. 23, 11, 10. This is 2,805 square feet. This is 3,916, 916 square feet in size. And then this is the, the smaller lot floor plan. So really just a single, single bed. And then the last building elevation floor plan. Castleford is a local neighborhood street, like we previously discussed. This segment is going to be the 34-foot wide paved roadway, curb gutter sidewalks on both sides, parking on both sides of the street as well. And currently, water, sanitary sewer and storm extend into that area. Parkland dedication has previously been satisfied with Milton Arthur Park. So staff recommends that the commission conduct the public hearing and upon consideration of testimony received, recommend approval of the proposed Sierra Vista PUD with no conditions. Recommend approval of preliminary plat with the following four conditions. These are all coming from Engineering Department. The first one is the public utility easements adjacent to the private street shall connect to public utility easements in the proposed Park Valley addition. The proposed easements that contain storm and sanitary sewer lines shall be increased to 30 feet in width to provide adequate access and separation. Vehicle access shall be provided to every other manhole, which is currently not possible for the manholes at the rear of Lot 1. And the proposed private street shall meet the requirements of City Standard Drawing Number Three, including but not limited to vertical and horizontal alignment requirements, fire hydrant access width requirements, and shoulder slope requirements. And then, of course, the direct staff to prepare an RCS document.
Okay, any questions for Mike?
Mike? Can you, can you expand a bit on those recommended conditions, why they're necessary and so
For the, so the public utility easements, so those are typically the franchise utilities. And every lot in newer subdivisions typically has a 10-foot utility easement adjacent to the street on their property. And that's in order for the franchise utilities to be able to run fiber and a vista to run power within those easements. There's a segment that doesn't tie into Park Valley. It was, you know, probably just drafting the two subdivisions, ended up not connecting. But I can give you an example. So you see the 10-foot easement, that's the dash line here.
Okay.
So there's a segment here, and this is Park Valley. It, it stops, even though Park Valley has the 10-foot easement along this. It just needs to continue to tie into that so we don't have a gap and franchise utilities aren't going to have an issue there. So that's where that comes from.
Okay.
This is the sanitary sewer, storm sewer easement. So this, these are just separation requirements that are needed. If the city has to get in and access those lines, you need a separation width to be able to dig up the lines. And that is typically 30 feet for two utilities. And so that's that requirement. The private street, just because of the extreme topography, there wasn't a, I believe, a street section that was submitted that showed kind of vertical curves and, and other aspects of the street that Engineering could review. So they wanted, obviously, the, it would need to meet our private street standards, but they wanted to make sure that that was going to be taken care of. And then there's a couple manholes, I believe, they exist right here and here. So may just need a different utility configuration. It may just need to extend down here. But every other manhole needs to be accessed by the city to be able to, to maintain it. And you need some type of roadway access to that. So that's usually a smaller paved section. So we'll just have to work through whether or not, you know, every time you, you have a change in, in angle, there's typically a manhole, and that's why there's two back there. So we'll probably just have to work through that between preliminary and final plat.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, great. Thanks, Mike. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Scott, would you like to address the commission?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. Scott Becker, Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. Yeah, Mike addressed most of that. And, and the reason we really were asking for a PUD for this section is because with a narrower street section that does meet the city standard for private streets, we can make that grade work and keep it under 10% for firetruck access. And so we, we do have that. We, we did not include a, a profile, but we do, we do meet the city standards. So those conditions put on by Engineering are, are nothing that we, you know, we've worked through those, since we got those conditions, and we don't see anything that, you know, don't disagree with any of those conditions that Engineering had. So really, we have some, some really nice lots on top, a little bit narrower, smaller lots in that steep section. But ultimately, with the, with the PUD, we're able to have a little bit more flexibility on how we develop this versus just a straight city street. So that was the, the reason for the PUD and, and why there's two separate plats in front of you tonight, so.
So any questions for, for Scott?
No. Scott, I understand there's no street profile, but I was, I was curious about what, what the grades of the street were. Can you give a sort of a unofficial verbal description of the?
Yeah, where we tie, tie into Castleford, you know, obviously, we have to meet the standard for the city street coming in. We can't just come in at a straight angle. So we take off from there with a small vertical curve. And then pretty much for the whole street section, we're just under 10%. So we're under 10%, but I'm not saying, and it's not 6%.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, we are, we are steep, but certainly within the, the city's acceptable range, so.
And Scott, the, the houses that, the examples that Mike was showing, are those actually going to be built or is that just?
That's what's proposed right now. There, we may ask for a little bit of flexibility and a change if, if one buyer, you know, prefers something else and we can still fit it on that lot and meet all the setback standards. That may be a consideration. But with those, with those proposed houses, they fit nice and look nice, and I think they're amenity to the neighborhood, so.
Great. Any other questions for Scott? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, would anybody like to speak in opposition to the PUD? And any comments of a general nature or in support? Okay, with that, then, we will close the public hearing. Any particular questions or comments by Commissioners? Okay, again, I think that this is a logical follow-on to the three or the, the two previous applications. It seems pretty straightforward and seems like an appropriate. And, you know, as a part of this, I would like to say, and kind of reiterating Dennis's comments, we really appreciate the comments that all of you have made on these other two public hearings as well. And we're certainly mindful of your concerns and, and encourage you to continue raising those concerns, be it to us or to city council. But we do appreciate your comments. All right.
Well, I was basically going to say that the PUD seems to me to be a reasonable response to a very difficult topography there and probably better than the previous layout.
Yeah. Sure agree. Okay, well, would somebody like to move to approve?
I'll move that we recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the following four conditions.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I think Joel beat you to it. So Mike's motion, Joel's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, and we need an RCS motion as well.
I think you also need the PUD.
Oh, the P, oh, my apologies. Okay, so can we include, can we just wrap that into, to one motion where?
Yeah, the, the four conditions are on the preliminary plat, and there's no conditions recommended on the PUD. You can certainly include that as one motion if you want.
Okay, well, as long as we've already got the motion on the, on the plat, why don't we go ahead and, we'll just do a separate motion for the PUD then. Okay, so anybody like to move on the PUD?
I'll make a motion, we recommend approval for the proposed PUD.
Okay, I have Dennis's motion.
Scott's second.
Scott's second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, and finally, an RCS motion. Would somebody like to, Victoria, how about?
Okay, so I move we direct staff to prepare the relevant criteria and standard structures.
Okay, we have a motion from Victoria, second. Rich, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, thanks very much. All right, so we now move on to the next. So, we now move on to the next public hearing, which is a proposed final subdivision plat for 17.2 acre area generally located east of the intersection of Third and Mountain View, Harvest Hills, second addition. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is just a final review. It's not a public hearing, so we had the, we had the public hearing.
Oh, boy.
Do I have that on the agenda?
I apologize. I thought we were going into another public hearing, so.
Just a final review. Yeah, we had the, we had the public hearing for the preliminary plat.
Okay.
Earlier this year, so.
Thank you.
So, yeah, this Harvest Hills second edition final plat review. Just to recall what's occurred up to this point, 7.2 acre area, and it was the plat, 56 single-family parcels which range from 7,219 to 24,075 square feet in size. And on May 17th, 2021, City Council approved the replat of Lot 1, Block 1 of Harvest Hills first edition preliminary plat with no conditions, and the applicant submitted the final subdivision plat to be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. And so, this is the property highlighted in the red at the center of your screen. You've got Moser Park there to the east, Damon Street here to the north, Moser Street as well. These are the Rolling Hills additions to the south, Mountain View Road here. This is the first addition of Harvest Hills here. This is from 2018, so a lot of the twin homes that are within that development have already been constructed on the north and the south sides of Third Street. And then you'll be hearing about the neighborhood business parcel. That'll be the next item for the final plat and final PUD review. So, this is the final plat that was submitted, virtually the same as the preliminary plat that you reviewed. Nothing's changed, really. So, you'll see the extension. This is Third Street, ends up tying into the existing segment of Rolling Hills eighth edition, which has already been constructed here, so those will tie together. And then this ends up heading north, ties into Jansen Street. And then you can see it ends up teeing off here, extending over, and then there's a more of a cul-de-sac, a wide cul-de-sac street with parkland proposed here at the center, and there is a pathway with right-of-way dedication that's proposed at the end of the cul-de-sac segment, provides access to Moser Park there to the east. And then there's a pedestrian connection that currently extends from Third Street within Rolling Hills, so the street's down here. You can see the, the 10-foot wide easement there. There's a sidewalk that ties into the property line, the property boundary of the subdivision there. That'll be extended up into the street there to the north, Amber Court. So, staff's reviewed the final plat for conformance with city and state code requirements and found both to be in conformance. Therefore, staff recommends the commission recommend approval of the final plat for Harvest Hills second edition to City Council with no conditions. And certainly, take any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mike? It looks pretty much like what we had on here to this. Any comments, questions? Well, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the final plat with no conditions.
And?
Second.
Second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. Approved. Thank you very much. And Mike, I guess you're just going to stay up there. This is the final unit development, final subdivision 1.1 acre parcel.
Yeah. So, what it's all written on this neighborhood business parcel, east corner of Mountain View and Third Street. There's a proposed PUD that was approved, as well as the replat of Lot 1, Block 1 of Harvest Hills first edition. There were 10 twin homes proposed, which range in size from 2,643 to 6,002 square feet in size for the lots. Four townhouse parcels ranging from 2,592 square feet to 3,852 square feet in size. And then one neighborhood business parcel, and that was 17,905 square feet in size. And then there's a private looped street through the proposed PUD and subdivision. So, May 17th of this year, same meeting as Harvest Hills second edition, the council approved the replat of Lot 1, Block 1 of Harvest Hills first edition preliminary plat with the same three conditions recommended by PNZ, and approved the PUD with no conditions. The three conditions on the preliminary plat were stormwater runoff control facility design needs to be evaluated to verify that there will be zero net increase in the rate of stormwater runoff from the development as a result of the design changes. And then the proposed stormwater swell running north-south, north-south along the east side of the parkland parcel, which is to the west, be relocated to its property previously designated as parkland for the development. And then the type A landscape buffer shall only be required along the west and south property lines of the 17,905 square foot neighborhood business lot, and other lot of the subdivision shall be required to install a type A landscape buffer. Then August 4th of this year, applicant submitted the final subdivision plat and final PUD to be reviewed by PNZ and City Council. And that brings us to the final plat before you tonight. So, this was the property highlighted in red. You can see Third Street, Mountain View, Road intersection here. These were the linear park properties that currently exist along the east side of Mountain View, Damon Street here to the north. You can see the continuation of Third Street. This would be the stormwater detention pond that carries a lot of the stormwater for the Harvest Hills subdivision. And then this is the PUD site plan that was submitted. So, you can see the private street accessed off of Third Street. There are a number, I think, eight or nine parking spaces that are located in this center open space island. And then you see the footprints for the, the twin homes. And so, each one of those represents a twin home. And then you get around this private street and transitions into the townhouses, and there's four of those here on the west side of the development. And this would be the remnant neighborhood business lot that's not proposed to have anything, just whatever would fit within the neighborhood business zone for that property. This was the elevations for the twin homes, so these are identical to the twin homes that have already been constructed within the first phase of Harvest Hills. This is the floor plan, mainly just living, dining, powder room, bathroom, garage. And then the second story includes a master bedroom and three other bedrooms, two bathrooms, and laundry facilities on each, each side. That brings us to the townhouse elevations, so essentially pretty similar to the twin home designs, and these have remained unchanged since the preliminary approval. Similar floor plans with the, the living, dining, kitchen on the first floor, as well as a garage and a bathroom. And then the second floor contains four bedrooms, being master, few baths, laundry. So, staff's reviewed the final plat, final PUD, conform to city state requirements and found both to be conforming. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission recommend approval of the final plat, the replat of Lot 1, Block 1 of Harvest first edition to the council with no conditions.
Any comments for Mike? Again, I think pretty straightforward. We've pretty much been through this before in, in a lot of detail, so it looks to me like it's ready to go. So, any questions or comments? And anybody like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the final plat and final PUD with no conditions.
Okay. We have a motion by Victoria.
I'll second.
Dennis's second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. And that's, Mike, we don't need an RCS on this one, do we?
No, sir.
Yeah, forgot. Okay. All right. Next item is approval of a reasoned statement of relevant criteria and standards. This is for the comprehensive plan designation and rezone that we did at the last meeting the property off of Robinson Lake Road. Anybody have any questions about the RCS as prepared? Are you, is approval for, for, okay.
Yep.
A motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Dennis' motion, I saw Mike, Mike's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. So, Joel, you, you're up next, the Transportation Commission report.
Well, it's to me that the, well, the Transportation Commission will meet at 4:00 in this room tomorrow, and it looks like our meeting is going to be sort of more of the same. The Transportation Commission is going to be looking at a number of preliminary subdivision plots and so on, and I believe, Mike, you can confirm that, I believe these are all things that I have seen previously, including the ones tonight. So, we'll be basically looking at transportation implications of the, we presume that there are some.
Be interesting to hear about that meeting at our next, our next meeting. Okay. Any, any? First one, can I, of course, one thing that I would like to mention is that I will not be available for the September 8th Transit, or sorry, Commission meeting. So, Dennis, if you would be able to share that, would be much appreciated. Okay. And we, our next meeting is August 25th. Mike, do you want to give us a preview for what we?
Yeah, it'll be the proposal at the end of Slonaker.
Okay.
Will be, yeah, Mark Wentz's PUD and plat, so.
Very good. Should be.
Rather large item.
Interesting meeting, yeah. All right. Very good. Any other comments? Good to the order. Well, with that, I will, the meeting is adjourned. So, thanks to everybody. I appreciate you coming out tonight and got through a lot of business tonight. Thank you.